...ended up meeting in Sue's absence this evening, so I appreciate the honor of the drive for our pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Certainly, I'd like to thank everyone for attending this evening. And that having been said, we'll get right to the agenda at hand. The first item on our agenda this evening will be the presentation of the DEC Camp Scholarships to Helena O'Shea and Hanlon Crane, and Commander Moore will make that presentation for us. Moose, you want to stand up?
I'm standing up.
Okay.
We can have both of them come up then. Helena, it is a great pleasure that the umbrella of VFW gives these awards out to young girls like this that want to go to camp and have a good time, but we do appreciate it, and I wish you the best in having a good time. Helena, which one's Helena? Thank you. Give you this. What I do not have is a little paper with the camp and the dates you guys are going. Helen, but we will get that and we'll give it to you. And thank you. Have a good time.
Congratulations, young ladies.
Yes.
And Bill, we'd certainly all like to thank the VFW for doing this. The VFW does this every year with money they raise. They send two kids to this DEC summer camp every summer. I think that's a very nice thing.
Well, no, I'd say boys at the post and Lee's auxiliary and the men's auxiliary with the different dinners and functions that we do. And as we come up to Memorial Day, I want to mention that, I guess, on the 27th, and the school with Paul there, we're going to be there at 9:15, step off at 10:00, and then we march to the village and have a nice memorial service. We have an Army Colonel this year coming to speak.
Ah.
So we hope everything goes well, and we hope the weather is good as it always is for us, even though it rains normally in the morning, and then we get a little rain in the afternoon, but it's always been good for us. In my years, it's only once that we had a heavy rain.
Yeah.
And that was back when I was a little more younger, and it was more fun. But thank you to the board. We thank you for all the work you do.
And how many years have you done this, Bill?
I have a number of over 20-some years. I mean, we started, like with the Little League, we were, the VFW is one of the first teams we had, and one of the first in Red Hook. And, you know, the different programs, like the Boys Semper Fi, Patriots, and the Little League, like I said, Eagle Awards, you know, with the different projects for the boys and for the girls, and the Gold Award, we do that, so we try to, you know, show our support to the community. Well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. I wish you the best.
All right, then, very next, oh, yes, and I thank you for everybody, ladies. I would like to thank our CAC. Our CAC are the ones that makes the decisions, that the gals, the applicants apply to our CAC, they make the decision, and they, which it just takes some time as well, too, and dedication, so it's very nice. Next, I would like to have the Red Hook Central School District budget presentation. That'll be Bruce Martin, Paul Finch, and Perry Sheldon. I'm very familiar with the first two guys. Perry, I'm not, but...
Perry's our Director of Facilities and Operations. He's here because we have a capital project on the ballot this year, and then we wanted to explain it to everybody and give you not...
Boilers.
Boilers, yes. The most exciting thing in the world, or it's on most... Thank you for having us.
Oh, certainly.
We started our budget cycle this year with two objectives that don't necessarily play nice together. First objective was to maintain opportunities for kids, the same opportunities this year, next year, for kids in our district. And the second objective was to do that under the tax cap. As you know, that creates a structural deficit for us. When we rolled over our budget to see what it would look like around January, we were looking at a deficit of about $1.6 million that we had to close that gap. Couple things worked in our favor this year. We had state aid increase of $515,000 that closed the gap slightly. We had a lower-than-expected increase in health insurance. We typically budget early on about an 8 percent, we assume an 8 percent increase because that's the long-term average for health insurance, but the health insurance increase came in at 3.7 this year, so that closed the gap more. Then we had six retirements, and we'll recognize some breakage, and we're not replacing one of the retirees. All that closed that $1.6 million gap to about $450,000. So what we decided to do with the remaining $450,000 is take money out of savings, retiree health insurance accrual that we have, and we recognize that there are some dangers inherent in that long term, and Bruce will address that in a second, but that closed the gap. So we're $163,000 under our maximum allowable tax levy. We're at 3.62, 3.62 on the levy, I'm sorry, 3.42 on the levy side of things. On the expenditure side, we're at 2.54. That's, we think, the fourth lowest in Dutchess County this year. Our maximum allowable tax levy would have been 3.97, and again, we're at 3.42. So that's the story in a nutshell. Again, we have a capital project on the ballot. Perry's going to talk about that, give Bruce an opportunity right now to tell you a little bit more about the budget, and then we'll answer any questions that you have.
Well, Paul covers the budget itself in pretty good detail, but let me just talk for another second about the money that we took from savings. So it was pretty easy for us to do this year. It's pretty easy for us to come out and talk about it. Sounds very easy, but anytime you balance a budget that has ongoing expenses and ongoing revenues with a one-shot revenue, that is a step in the direction of weakening the fiscal position a little bit. So if we think that through a little bit, that's $450,000 that, after all the things Paul talked about, we had a remaining structural deficit. So if our only objective was fiscal and not program, we probably would have gone back and looked at another $450,000 worth of things that we would have cut, things that we would have taken out of the program at the district. But looking at the fact that we've already done that a number of times over the last four or five years, we thought the right thing to do was to dip into this one-time revenue, balance the budget this year, although keeping in mind that that's really pushing those cuts down the road in hopes that things get better sometime in the future, that perhaps the rules change, the economy turns around, state aid gets a little bit stronger, in the hopes that we would never have to actually make those cuts. But should those cuts come along, those will be compounded with cuts that will be driven by what we presume will be a structural deficit out in those future years as well. So just something to be aware of as we move into this first year of taking money out of savings to balance the budget, it's not a plan that will work permanently. Eventually, you have to wean yourself off of those savings as they begin to run out. A couple of important dates to keep in mind for folks, you do have to be registered to vote in the school election, and if you're not registered right now, tomorrow is an opportunity to do that. So tomorrow, May 15th, at the Mill Road Elementary School on the 3-5 side, from noon to 9:00 is an opportunity to come in and get registered just for the school election. That would not register you for the general elections, as if you had gone to the county. But if you want to vote in the school election, you can get registered to do so tomorrow afternoon and evening at the Mill Road School. And then the annual budget vote date is the third Tuesday in May this year, that's next week, Tuesday, May 21st. Again, that's from noon to 9:00, and it's in the 3-5 gymnasium. There will be some items in addition to the budget on the ballot. We have a board election going on. There are two seats that come up this year. We have two candidates running for those seats, and they are incumbents, Kelly Mosier and Johanna Moore. We have, for the last six or eight years, we've had a student board member that sits at the table with the board. It's a non-voting student board member, but he brings, he or she brings a student perspective to that body. It has to be voter-approved, it was voter-approved originally. It also has to be renewed every other year, and this is the year that we do that. So the student board member renewal is on the ballot. Pretty much every year, we have a bus proposition, and this year's no exception. We have a proposition for two full-size buses and a wheelchair van in the dollar amount of $280,000. That's more or less in the range than it is on an annual basis, and that's an effort to maintain roughly a 10-year replacement cycle on the vehicles that transport the kids to and from school every day. And then finally, we have the $7.5 million capital project that Perry will talk about in just a minute. I would comment that neither the bus proposition nor the capital project will have any impact on the 1314 tax levy. The bus proposition will either be paid for remaining fund balance at the end of this year, or will be bonded in a way where any payment would come into the following fiscal year. And the capital project, if approved by the voters, will also be a bonded project, and the first debt service payments on that would not happen until the '14-'15 year. So those two propositions, if approved, would not have any impact on the 1314 school district budget or tax levy. And with that, I'll give Perry a few minutes to tell you about some of the details in that capital project.
Thanks, Bruce. So as every school district in New York State, they're constantly looking at their infrastructure and the condition of their buildings and what it takes to keep their doors open, and we're no different. So we have a list of capital projects or things that, major projects that we need to do throughout the district. We keep working down the list. As you remember, we did the roofing project a few years ago, and then last summer, we did a renovation of nine science classrooms. Now, we're down to the list, and we're looking at boilers at the Mill Road Elementary School. As you may know, the building was built 1969 with a major addition put on in '71. All the heating plants in that building are original to the building, as are all the unit ventilators, and all the control system has an old pneumatic control system that was great in the day, it's just, it's outlived its useful life. Those assets, when they were put in, typically you would expect a 25- to 30-year useful life, were now pushing between 40 and 45 years. So we've gotten our monies where they've been well-maintained, but we're starting to see repairs that are, and the repairs run in the tens of thousands of dollars, and parts are becoming questionable as to whether they'll be available. In addition to the boiler project, we're also have a, we've got some security elements where we're looking at the Mill Road Elementary School. Currently, it's the only building in the district that doesn't have a card access system, which allows, makes it easier to keep the building secure during the day, but allow people who are appropriate to travel in and out to make access. We're also looking at the telephone system. The original phone system was put in back in the '90s. We've been told that as of July of this year, spare parts for that phone system are no longer going to be available as new, so we start looking at having to buy aftermarket or used parts to keep an important asset like that going.
That's district-wide.
And that's district-wide, yeah, that phone system is district-wide. We're also looking at upgrading the cameras. We have a camera system in the building now for security. We're looking at expanding that and providing greater coverage, better security.
Wireless internet?
Yes, and the wireless internet. Yeah, that's my favorite part. I keep thinking about, you know, what are people really interested in, you know, depending on what group we're talking to, you know, in some cases, the wireless internet. And it's a good asset. It provides for greater flexibility for teachers and students throughout the district. It makes for a better learning environment, so.
I think we'll pause, and then we'll ask questions. Thank you.
Now, that $7.5 million, does that include all the items you spoke of, Perry?
That's the total, yes.
Not just the boiler package?
No, that's the entire package.
And then my...
I want to just jump in to say that we would be responsible for the entire, the local community wouldn't be responsible for the entire $7.5. We have a ratio of 64 percent.
That was my next question, what percentage was?
Yeah. We're at 64 percent.
So we pay roughly 36 locally, which would appear in the '14-'15 budget first time.
Right, and we have a plan, if you look at our debt service, we have debt service dropping off right around that time, and we have a debt service fund, so we think we can, fairly confident we can smooth this out, so...
Without a drastic bump a year from now.
Correct, right.
Even the whole project is only worth, in the first year, it comes on as about a third of a percent on the tax levy, and then the second year, about a third of a percent on the tax levy, and it's fully phased in. We think we can lower that impact even a little bit more with the debt service fund and the debt that falls off.
Do you anticipate the new boiler system being considerably more efficient than the 40-plus?
Well, there is going to be some efficiency, although I'm very careful not to oversell it as an energy efficiency project. One of the things that happens is that we have to, we bring things up to the new code, and the difference between the code now and in 1969 requires a lot more air changes in the room. So one thing that will improve, not that we have a problem with indoor air quality, but there'll be more air changes, so it'll be more efficient to provide the heat, but in essence, we're going to end up exhausting more heated air...
Heating more air.
Heating more air to meet the code.
Were there any nicer incentives?
Yep, we're going to look at all the incentives that we can. We have also looked at alternatives. We looked at geothermal, you know, we thought it'd be great if we could at least do some geothermal, but we don't have the air conditioning load that typically is required with a geothermal to really make it cost-effective. But, yeah, we're looking at every incentive that we can, yeah.
You guys have any questions?
You're still going to use fuel oil?
It will still be number-two fuel oil, yes.
Okay, and so the numbers you put out, if I interpret it correctly, it's around $2.5 million to the local taxpayer, and the rest of it, about $5 million would be state aid, is that correct?
Yeah.
That's approximation.
Ballpark, and that's principle-only. Actually, it's a 15-year useful life, and it'll be bonded over 15 years, and the aid payments will come in sync with the bond payments. So it'll be, in today's environment, there'll be a small interest cost as well.
Yeah. A 15-year useful life of the installation?
No, when you do bonding, they, no, when you do bonding, they put a useful life on it, and it's designated as 15-year useful life. I think the boilers probably have a, like, 25- to 30-year...
In the meantime, we have 40-year-old boilers there.
Yeah.
Bill, can you think of anything?
No.
I mean, you guys? Anybody from the public have questions for these gentlemen?
What is all the documentation for that?
Well, we've got it available in our offices.
It's available in all buildings. Most of our formal budget document is available on the website, and the folks in Red Hook within the district should be receiving a newsletter within the next couple of days as well.
So all of the things that you itemized, the type of wireless internet and the type of boilers, the actual, you know, requisition data, where is that located?
Well, that, that doesn't exist at this point, because in this process, we do a conceptual design to build a budget. Once it's been approved by the voters, then we move forward with the design, more detailed design.
Okay, so how do you pose the amount of money if you don't know what stuff you're going to want?
The, we work with a construction manager, as well as an architectural firm, who have historical information that they use to say, okay, when you're looking at a building of this size, here's what...
All ballpark.
Well, it's ballpark, but it's better than that. It's a lot of history that tells them that when you're looking at a building this size, this is what the cost of a boiler is, or this is based on square footage, based on BTU requirements, so. They come in pretty close on these projects, yeah.
It is a bit of a backward system, but there is a rationale for it as well. The purpose is to minimize the pre-referendum expenses, so the architect does not go into full design mode until after the referendum has been approved. So he puts some, he puts some estimates on it initially, and then, once approved, you really go into full design mode.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, men. Yep. All right, to move on, the next item on the agenda is the supervisor's report. Sue has been so kind as to leave that here for me. I gotta put my little cheaters on somehow. The lights aren't as bright in here as they once were, you know? And I saw the, the opening balance, and this is as of April 30th, 2013, was $4,234,176.58. Receipts, $3,428,551.10. Dispersed, $4,177,684.65, leaving us a balance of $3,485,43.3. Let me tell you, we do have some budget adjustments as well. So we'll start with the General A Fund. We have an increase in revenues of $3,802. That's due to prior year franchises, refund prior year expenditures, and Girl Scout handicap swing. Total reduced appropriations of $9,439, and that's insurance premiums on a vehicle and contingent. So the total increase in appropriations will be $13,241. That's interest on the bond for the garage, engineer, general, and Girl Scout handicap. In the General B Fund, we have a total increase in revenues, engineering deposits and planning board fees of $60,400. That was a big project before a planning board paid their fees, and that was the big bump there. And so a total increase in appropriations, insurance premium vehicle of $7,463, engineering TNA $5,000, and contingent $47,937. And the Highway DB Fund, a total increase in appropriations of $32,000 for machinery, and that'll be an offset to the fund balance. And the Water Works O and M, we have a total increase in revenues for Ropie Water Relivery, $6,250, and so that'll be an increase in the appropriations of $6,250. And the other funds and capital projects, we have, we reduced the revenues, the Van Proceed Sisum Road Bridge, we all know that was reconstructed and rebuilt last fall, reduce appropriations, attorney's fees of $30,000. Total increase in appropriations typically fire capital from 2012, $8,379, West Curly Corners Road, 123, PDR, Kalina and Greg, $477,833, and PDR, Casseki Farm, 44, that's in the early stages yet. So the total increase in appropriations is $486,379. And a couple of the offsets are the $42,274 for the Sisum Road Bridge and $8,379 for fire protection. Entertain a motion to accept the supervisor's report as read.
So moved.
Second.
Any other comment, or all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay. I guess you're up next with your report, yeah?
Town Clerk month a report, April 1st through April 30th, 2013. Total local shares remitted to the supervisor for town revenue, $2,458.47. Amount remitted to New York State Ag and Markets for the Spade and Neuter Program, $82. Amount remitted to New York State Department of Health for marriage licenses, $90. And amount remitted to New York State Environmental Conservation, $1,531.53, for a total state, county, and local revenue of $4,162. Pursuant to Section 27, Sub 1 of the town law, hereby certify that the foregoing is a full and true statement of all fees and money received by me, Sue McCann, Town Clerk, Town of Red Hook during the period stated above in connection with my office. And that's it, I just have one quick little announcement. I'm still collecting taxes till the very end of May, as long as it is post office postmarked, by May 1st, you can still send it in to me. If not, it gets sent down to the Commissioner of Finance, so I just wanted to remind...
Then it gets more expensive, doesn't it?
Then another percentage goes on, so. I also do have the April's abstract, and these are vouchers that are paid in the month of April. General A, $527,389.87. The General B, $37,779.18. And the Highway DB, $76,693.83. The next two are the capital projects, the Sisum Road Bridge, $175. Capital Project Highway Garage, $2,449.61. SF Fire, $17,270. SL Lighting, $4,483.42. Water O and M, $5,882.56, for a total abstract of $885,940.47. I hereby certify that the vouchers numbered 16030 through 16228, processed in the month of April 2013, are an accurate reporting of the abstracts approved for payment by the town board, signed by Sue. And that's it.
Thank you very much, Sue. Now, next, we can't start the public hearings till 8:15. We could start public comment before that. However, at the beginning of the public contact, our county representative asked if he might speak to us briefly, so Ben, you've got the floor.
Thank you, Deputy Supervisor, I appreciate it. Just wanted to come back, this is the first town board meeting I've been able to attend since we passed the local solid waste management plan, and I mostly just wanted to extend my thanks to you and the board and the supervisor who's not here for allowing me to come back in March to get some questions and answers with the public, as well as the board, about the direction we were going with solid waste management, because since probably about February till we passed it in April, that was one of my primary focuses down at the county legislature since I'm Chair of the Environmental Committee. So I appreciated having an opportunity and a good forum for questions, answers, and discussion, and suggestions on the plan. Just wanted to update everybody that it has been passed as of April, I believe, the 7th, has been sent to the DEC, and we expect full cooperation as they were, they had a hand in crafting the plan with us, and we're very pleased with it. There were two major changes via amendments since I last spoke to you and the public. One of them was an amendment that I proposed on the night of the board meeting, where we deleted a bunch of language on, I believe it was a couple pages in the mid-40s section of the plan. I don't have it in front of me, I apologize, but we deleted a lot of the language that we thought might make it a little easier for ash landfills to pop up, so we wanted to get rid of that, get rid of that possibility. The county executive was very good at working with us with that, and some other legislators proposed also having a periodic presentation and report by the Department of Solid Waste Management where we are and what they're doing to implement the plan, pretty much on a, definitely on an annual basis, and on a quarterly basis or subject requested by members of the legislature. So those were two of the major changes. Otherwise, it's a, the plan I presented is pretty similar, and there are copies available at Dutchess County office buildings through the legislature. You could call, you could come by if you're down there and get one if you wanted to see the finalized version of this.
How thick is it, Ben? How big?
It's pretty thick, yeah. It's a light, no, it's a light read, though. I mean, if you have a good hour, you can get it.
I mean, I was thinking, it'd be nice, maybe you could get us a copy, we can keep it at Town Clerk's office if somebody from the public was interested up here and seeing it, you know, keep it on file here.
That is a good idea. Appreciate it. I'll definitely get my hands on one, bring it by for us, if that'll be okay.
Sure, absolutely.
And so basically, I just wanted to say thank you, you know, that forum was very helpful to me as we were considering amendments and as we were considering what we were going to do, and also want to remind everybody that it is just a, it is just a guideline. We have 10 years to go with this plan in implementing it. We're looking at a projection of increasing our recycling from 24% to 60%, so we're excited at that opportunity, but, you know, anybody who has any concerns or suggestions for solid waste, for our solid waste department, you know, it's still, it's still open, you know, we're not, it's not, nothing's set in stone. We're always looking for better ways to do things down there, so. So I wanted to say thank you, and I don't know if we have much time, but if anybody had anything to say. I guess I wore them out the last time I came. Thank you, Deputy Supervisor.
Ben, what is your name?
Ben Trapp.
Ben Trapp.
Sorry, Ben Trapp, Dutchess County Legislature. Close it down on me.
I wanted to talk with you again, just briefly, about the conversation we had the other day.
Sure.
I thought that was kind of interesting and worth pursuing. We talked about the fact that the bond is, the contract is up on the, on the... that the bond is, the contract is up on the, on the burn plant in fourteen, right, two thousand and fourteen?
That's correct, we've, the bond and the contract are two separate things, we have, there are two sets of bonds out from, one of the sets is from the inception of the plant. One of the sets of bonds has been paid off, which has helped us cut the next service fee and half, and the other set of bonds, you know, still has to do with upgrades that were made, I think, probably in the late eighties, and as far as the contract with Covanta, that is up in two thousand and fourteen, so that's when we get, well, it goes to the county executive first, but then it would come to the legislative body for approval if he wants to, if he wants to renew the contract or seek, you know, seek any kind of other options when it comes to that. So that's two thousand and fourteen, so the contract is up, yes.
Ben, so we had talked about the possibility of exploring, would that facility be able to be reused for something else?
Well, it's-
Some newer technology.
It is possible, and that's something that we can, we can submit for some specific consideration to the solid waste department, you know, it's great now that we have, when I first got there, we didn't have a solid waste department, and it was basically, you know, we didn't have any oversight or any kind of, you know, mechanism of people with expertise on this, so I'm glad that we have Lindsay Correll, she was, did a great job with this whole thing, and she gave a presentation down in Millbrook, so, you know, she's very knowledgeable, she was on this plan from day one, so we can talk to her a little bit about that. I mean, that's, there's a couple of ifs in that, obviously, depending on what the kind of executive comes back to the next, it'll be the next legislature with, as far as if he's, if he's looking to renew the contract, or if we're looking to get out, so, I mean, it's something we can look into, and I'd be happy to, I'd actually be very interested in finding out if they have any plans for future use as well.
Thank you.
So we can talk about that in more detail as we go along.
And you'll keep us updated.
Absolutely, yeah.
Thank you.
Ross, do you-
No worries.
About the plant, does, where does the waste, the residual waste go, the ash waste go from there?
There is, there is storage of the ash, but there, it's a, it's a waste of energy plant.
Right, no, I'm sorry, but the ash, the leftover ash that's filled with mercury and all the real bad stuff?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Some of it is taken out of county, some is stored here. We're looking to kind of get out of the business of, you know, it's like, the idea is, it all, it all comes down to the recycling, right? We recycle more, we burn less, there's less ash, et cetera, but, you know, that was part of what we did with the amendment that I was talking about, is, you know, there was, the language was too, was too much that you could just have an ash landfill, which we don't really want, we'd rather have it in storage in the coming years where we can get rid of it, if I may, if that makes sense to you, so.
Does it make sense? Sorry.
Why is that?
How do you put something in storage to get rid of it?
Well, I mean, we're not gonna, we're not looking for any permanent landfills, I mean, obviously, there is ash at this point, we're trying to reduce how much ash that we have, so.
Define a destination for it as it becomes available.
Well, I mean, whatever we can do.
Store it until then, is what you're saying.
Exactly, and we have, that has been the practice, in the past, there's been, there wasn't, there wasn't really a plan the last ten years, they never came through with this, there really wasn't, it was kind of like a, you know, the last administration kind of had a, you know, play it by year kind of, kind of mentality when it comes to this, but the new administration is working hard to try to make sure that we have less ash, and that we have less ash stored in the county.
And I don't know if this was in the plan, but I heard that you were bringing in trash from other counties in order to meet the facility's needs.
They do have, that's part of the contract. The contract was negotiated, I want to say, in nineteen eighties, you know, it was before, you know, I was involved, so I don't know the exact date, but that's part of the contract with Covanta, is that we assure a certain amount of garbage, you know, because they, you know, obviously, their business-
It needs garbage, you know, it's what?
So that's something that Brendan and I were talking about, so, you know, is the next, you know, the next contract, that's something that the county executive's gonna have to hammer out, because we're trying to reduce our garbage, we don't want to bring any more garbage in, we're trying to reduce the garbage that we have, but it has been reduced by certain things outside of our control, like Ulster County now has flow control, which means that their waste goes to their plant, you know, we don't get any of it. I know, we actually had a discussion at this, the first time I was here, Councilwoman Kinkle and I, about, you know, whether, whether we could get anything from Ulster County, and the answer to that now is no, you know, we can't. So that is, reduce that, but yes, we do have a, it is based on the contract, you know, they try to get to the number that they need, that they need, you know, to not be a violation of the contract, but, you know, my hope, you know, I don't get to negotiate the contract, I would get to vote on it when it's presented to us, you know, if I were a part of the next legislature, whoever is in that seat, but I would, I would hope that we would, you know, get out of that business, get a better contract, because the contract frankly isn't good.
My hope would be that we actually phase out the plant entirely, because it's actually not a solution to our waste problem, because it just, you just, you need waste in order to feed it.
Right.
So people are gonna have to create garbage instead of either reducing or recycling.
And that's the catch twenty-two, that's the catch twenty-two, because, you know, the last plan had a, had a recycling rate that was, that was, we fell sorely short of, because during the last administration, first of all, the plan was outdated, because it was from nineteen ninety-two, they didn't, they missed the deadline in two thousand and two, they didn't submit to the legislature, and so it was an outdated plan, but it was also, they fell very short of their goal, you know, and in part, you have that monkey on your back of having to provide a certain amount of garbage to the, to the, to Covanta, which hopefully we won't have come next year, in such a, you know, being handcuffed that way. So I feel like, you know, that's why, you know, the projection is really just a projection, because, you know, there was a lot of concern about that, that we were only at about twenty-four percent, when they had projected it was going to be around fifty percent, so we're hoping, you know, obviously, in order to get to that rate, you know, we have to, you know, we have to do something to make sure that we're not shackled, and, you know, my position personally, I've always been okay with the idea of getting rid of the plant, but that's gonna, I mean, we're looking far down the road as far as, you know, who's supporting what, and, you know, if that's a reality, but, you know, it had been a, it had been a money pit, when I first got there, it was about four million dollar subsidy.
Most of them around the country are money pits.
They are, oh, absolutely, and it was, it was about a four million dollar subsidy, which is about, every million dollars is a percentage on your tax bill, and now that the bonds are paid off and we have some more oversight, we've, it's, we budgeted about two million, so we're getting there monetarily, but, I mean, you're right, if you have, if you have a plant, you know, you have to feed the plant, and if, I would not like to see us fall short of the sixty percent goal, and I don't know how the plant necessarily factors into that, into that goal, so, you know, my position as of right now is I would be okay with, with getting out of the business.
I'll be happy to work with you on that.
Yes.
Are you satisfied with the safety of the current storage of the toxic ash?
I mean, I'm not as, I, I mean, the thing is, we have it, we have to do something with it right now, I'd like to see us not have it, I mean, that's, that's where that is right now.
The question is, is it safely secured at the moment?
I mean, it's, it is safely secured, it's just I, I don't-
Like, it can't get into the water supply, it can't leak into rivers, it can't improperly-
We have not had an issue with that, but I would, I wouldn't want to wait to have an issue with it, you know, again, it's like, this is kind of the way I've, you know, articulated where I am on this, is I feel like, you know, what we're gonna try to do over the next ten years, and, you know, sixty percent's just a goal, DEC called it ambitious, but, you know, hopefully, we can reach it, and even, I'd be happy to go farther than sixty percent, but, you know, obviously, it's a, it's a long road, because we are only at twenty-four percent, but we would like to put ourselves out of business, if we don't have any more garbage to burn, we don't have a need for a plant, and then we don't have any more ash, so, that's what I'm hoping we can get to in the next ten years, it's gonna be a struggle, but, you know, the solid waste management department is full of staff who's much more qualified on these issues necessarily than any of us in the legislature, we're just elected officials, and they're working very hard on education, they're working very hard on getting, getting everything together, and that's a, that's a resource we didn't have until two thousand and ten, the position was created in two thousand and eleven, we got the funds for it, so hopefully, now that we have professionals working on this, and some, some more oversight, we won't have to have this discussion again in ten years, so, that's my hope, but that's where we are right now, but I'd be happy to, as long as I'm around in office, you know, I'd like to, I'd certainly be happy to have these discussions and provide more updates as, as to where we are in the plan, as, as far as I know, as, as much as I get updated, I'll keep you updated.
Okay, does Solid Waste Management Committee use Twitter?
Do they use Twitter? You know, I don't know for sure, my guess would be no right now, Dutchess County Government does have a, a Facebook and a Twitter, and it can, I mean, it is a, Solid Waste Management is affiliated with, it's a, it's a division of county government, so if there's any kind of, I mean, that's a suggestion we can bring to them, that maybe whoever, I'm embarrassed to say, I don't even really know who mans our Twitter page, but whoever does-
Get a hashtag for yourselves, and then we can follow what you're up to.
Yeah, that, that's not a bad idea, you know, I will present that idea, along with the others, the Councilwoman Kinkle's been talking about, Lindsay Correll, when I, when I have a chance to speak with her, I appreciate that. Thank you, Kirk.
Thank you, Ben.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay, well, see, exactly on time.
Yeah, about that.
So now we will start the public hearings. Chris, I, we could probably do the three related to fracking together, do you think? We have them separate on the agenda, but-
Well, I think what I would do is call them each, and even certainly, if people want to comment on the brine, you know, and the other ones, well, they're up at each between that time, but I think we need to leave it open long enough that if anybody shows up, that's, they still comment for us.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
So, the next item is the public hearings, and that's on, there's three of them, one is the Local Law A, which prohibits the use of brine on the town roads, that's, that's fracking brine. The second one is adoption of Local Law B, amending Chapter Eighty-four of the Town of Red Hook to prohibit the disposal of natural gas or oil drilling waste products in the Town of Red Hook, in other words, you're not gonna dump the stuff here also. And the third one related to this is the adoption of Local Law C, prohibiting heavy industry in Red Hook, that's sort of a modification of our existing zoning, is not to specifically state that, that the fracking industry is considered a heavy industry and not permitted in our town.
Correct.
I can read the public hearing notice?
Yes, do you mind, Sue?
No, not at all. Notice of public hearings, now, the three were on, one notice of public hearing, the three, one at eight fifteen, eight twenty, and eight thirty. Please take notice that a public hearing will be held by the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook on May fourteenth, two thousand and thirteen, at eight fifteen, local time at the Town Hall, seventy-three forty South Broadway, Red Hook, New York, one-two-five-seven-one, to hear all interested persons on Local Law Number A, proposed of two thousand and thirteen, entitled, "A Local Law to Prohibit Brine on Town Roads." The proposed local law would prohibit the application of brine on town roads and town property. Please take further notice that a public hearing will be held by the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook on May fourteenth, two thousand and thirteen, at eight twenty P.M. local time at the Town Hall, seventy-three forty South Broadway, Red Hook, New York, one-two-five-seven-one, to hear all interested persons on Local Law Number B, proposed of two thousand and thirteen, entitled, "A Local Law Amending Chapter Eighty-four of the Town Code to Prohibit the Disposal of Natural Gas or Oil Drilling Waste Products in the Town of Red Hook." The proposed local law amends Chapter Eighty-four to prohibit natural gas or oil drilling waste disposal facilities within the town. Please take further notice that a public hearing will be held by the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook on May fourteenth, two thousand and thirteen, at eight thirty P.M. local time at the Town Hall, seventy-three forty South Broadway, Red Hook, New York, one-two-five-seven-one, to hear all interested persons on Local Law Number C, proposed of two thousand and thirteen, entitled, "A Local Law to Prohibit Heavy Industry." The proposed local law would clarify the heavy industry, that heavy industry is prohibited within the town, including without limitation, natural gas and oil exploration, natural gas and oil extraction, natural gas and oil support activities. Please take further notice that copies of said proposed local laws are available for review at the Town Hall, seventy-three forty South Broadway, Red Hook, New York, one-two-five-seven-one. All interested persons will be given an opportunity to be heard in person or by directing comments and writing to the Town Board, seventy-three forty South Broadway, Red Hook, New York, one-two-five-seven-one. All reasonable accommodations will be made for persons with disabilities, in such a case, please notify the Town Clerk in advance at the above address or by phone, eight-four-five-seven-five-eight-four-six-zero-six, so that arrangements can be made, by order of the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook, dated April ninth, two thousand and thirteen, Sue McCann, Town Clerk, Town of Red Hook. And this, the notice was duly published in the town's official newspapers, the Daily Freeman and the Poughkeepsie Journal, it was on the website, posted, sent to the two villages, and some of them had to be sent also to surrounding towns, went to Claremont, Mytland, and Grinbeck. And that's it.
Thank you, Sue. Now that you've got that information on, we'll open the public hearing, but I'd like you to, if you could stand at the microphone, give us your name, and then, of course, go on with the comments.
Never mind.
Well, if you could speak clearly enough from, right from there, just give us your name and go ahead and make your comments, sir.
Well, where was these, this notice pub, you said where they're published, but how many times, and when?
It's, it's published one time only.
That's limiting.
Well, it's costly, so it's taxpayer money, and we're only allowed to do it one time, and they were actually published on April twenty-fifth. The Daily Freeman and the Poughkeepsie Journal, it's posted at the Town Hall, it's on our town website, sent to the two villages.
This is a very important thing, to be messing with the water supply, and to mess with it is not really, it should be the business of the people, not the board.
Well, that's why there's a public hearing.
But it's very limited, it's, it's no turnout. Where are the, there's nine people here, that's not-
You'll have to ask the people.
But then they get what they deserve, excuse me. I'm sorry, but I can always get out of here also, and move to another town when there's no more water supply. I'm sorry if I don't, if my diction is bad, it used to be all right.
Well, you know, the purpose of this, these laws, was to prohibit or limit the fracking or the disposal of that, things that you might be concerned about contaminating our water supply, and, you know, we have talked about it for a number of months at different meetings, and, you know, our meetings are generally on Pand and everything as well, in addition to the official notification and publication.
Well, it could be very, very, very hard, and you heard of the suit to a very great extent, and to make people aware, so they do attend these meetings, but if they're not aware, they're not gonna be here. Broadcasting is very important, and I can understand all the time when they watch on television, Panda has to make diction a little better, at least better than mine.
Well, maybe with that comment, they'll take that to heart and try and do that, thank you.
All right.
Hi.
Yes.
My name's David.
What's your last name, David?
Russo, R U S S O, I live in Town of Red Hook.
Thank you.
And I appreciate the spirit of the proposed law to prohibit, quote-unquote, brine on town roads, which is the proposed law I'm speaking to, but the wording of, and the language of the proposed, our proposed law is too broad, and there's some things missing that the county of Ulster had also had the same concern, some of the legislators there, that the word brine was too broad and would potentially affect the possibility of highway departments from just using what brine really is, which is saltwater. What's happened is, it sounds to me that the industry has pulled a fast one on local municipalities across the country to try to get their types of waste snuck in and defined as brine, which it's not, it's salty, plus radioactivity, and lots of other toxic chemicals. So it's, to use the word brine to describe, you know, hydraulic fracturing, without calling it hydraulic fracturing brine, is our mistake in our current wording, and I emailed between Craig Lopez, who's a legislator in Ulster County, about this, and he had the same concern when they were passing their legislation, and he had it amended, their proposed legislation amended to be more specific and with more clear definitions, and so I have a copy of that, specifically, our law, it does not even have the word brine defined in the law. There's definitions section, but it defines natural gas and oil production byproducts, it doesn't define brine, so that's a real flaw, and it's not gonna, it's not gonna work unless you define what brine is, and the city of Kingston was able to cut a lot of costs by investing in some equipment to make a saltwater solution, which is what brine is, that's the definition of brine in all the dictionaries, to be able to spread on their roads, instead of crystal salt, to, and add better results at less expense for storm issues, so, not that our town is going to need to do that or invest in that, but this law, as it's worded, looks like it would prohibit our highway department from doing what Kingston is doing to simply prepare for storms with plain old saltwater brine. So that's my biggest concern, is the language is too, is too vague, so, their language proposed in Ulster County, which passed, brine shall mean production brine, produced waters, flowback, flowback fluids, et cetera, which is in the law, but it's not defined as brine, so.
Covers it all, though, right?
It doesn't cover any pockets.
Well, it's defined pretty-
I don't want to get into- I don't want to get into.
It's only called the brine prohibition like Leander's law, you know, because there's no definition of Leander's.
I'm not sure you're reading our law. It actually is a purely lengthy paragraph.
The law is called, "A Local Law to Prohibit Brine on Town Roads", which is given to me by your assistant clerk.
Okay.
And the law that was passed in Ulster County is called, "Hydraulic Fracturing Brine Prohibition Act." That's a law that I can support. But just banning brine on our roads is.
Are you looking at page five, the bottom of page five? Of the local law number one of 2013?
I think it does cover it.
I'm looking at this filing right here.
Yeah.
I think you only have the covered, I think you only have the.
I have paragraph two, 491, 492, application is defined, natural gas and oil production byproducts is defined, road is defined. The word brine is not defined in what I'm holding in my hand.
But I think it's only used in the title, David, is that true? I don't think it's used in the body.
It's only used in the title.
Our attorney couldn't address it?
Yeah.
If I could just address this.
Yeah, because we discussed it at length.
We're very familiar with this law. The prohibition in the law says the application of natural gas and oil production waste on any town road on a property, whether as a de-icing substitute or for any purposes prohibited, that is a sentence of the law. And those provisions, those applications, the word application is defined, as you can see, very broadly, to cover placing natural gas and oil production byproducts on one or more town roads or pieces of town property. And natural gas and oil production byproducts in turn is defined very carefully to include products which are byproducts of exploration, drilling, or extraction of natural gas and oil or other subsurface hydrocarbons. It very clearly doesn't include salt or salt brine. So you have no issue with the definition of words. And, Phil, you're absolutely right. The title is very similar to a Leanders law type. Title is just the title, which is sort of a generic description, but the actual prohibition in the language of the law is, it's actually very clear.
The legislative intent, section one, you know, it says, "This local law prohibits the application of oil and gas, mining, and drilling byproduct, including the brine." The brine being the drilling byproduct.
So this law would not prohibit our highway department from putting saltwater on our roads?
No, it not, because we discussed that at length, actually, before coming up with it, yeah.
This law has a track record. We did a lot of research before we proposed.
Sure, I did some research and found a legislator who had my same concerns and modified their laws according to those concerns. So I didn't align with that. I was like, wow, there's some precedent here across the river for being more specific in our laws to prevent potential local contractors or whoever from being locked out of being able to do what they do with saltwater. So that's why I bring this to the question. If you are taking your legal advice and think that it's not going to have any effect on putting saltwater on the road in the future, then hallelujah.
Always spend a lot of time coming up with this wording and.
Why not define it as brine? I don't understand why you're calling it.
Production brine is what's referred to, which is included, but not limited to production brine, which is what you're.
But why don't we have the word production brine defined in the definition?
Because we're not prohibiting brine.
We're not prohibiting.
We're prohibiting the application of natural gas and oil production wastes on town roads. That's the prohibition. That's what is prohibited.
Why don't you entitle it, oh, no, "Prohibition of Hydraulic Fracturing Brine"?
Because we used a law that has passed muster around the state. And that was one of our concerns, that we would not have pushed back. So I'm not sure what you're proposing. We did some extensive research with.
Why have you worried if you've already done all your research? Thank you.
Because we have, we went after you to talk to you.
My comment is just that the title of the local server makes more sense.
Okay.
It's specific.
Okay.
Thank you. So that's basically it. Yeah, as long as it doesn't affect our ability to put plain old saltwater on there.
It does not.
And why doesn't it get, you know, confused, then that's great. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Who would like to speak next to either one of these three related issues?
Hi, I'm Lori Urban, and I live in the village of Red Hook. And I just would like to make a comment that I am very appreciative to the Town Board for being proactive about the potential dangers of hydraulic fracturing. And I think it's an excellent move. I am very supportive of this and very, very grateful. Rather than to wait till something started happening and then have to get action together to prohibit it or to regulate it, to move ahead and put something in place now is just a great, great idea, and I am very thankful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lorna Conroy, I also live in the Town of Red Hook. I've recently returned here, we recently returned here from spending some time upstate in the southern tier, in northern Delaware, in Oscego County, and in Herkimer, where we were doing some work and staying up there. And I can tell you that this topic is a daily crisis. People who are on either one side or the other side of the issue. But I would strongly like to advocate for passing this and for moving this forward because as this gets more contentious and as more and more towns around the state are receiving appeals where their zoning laws are being put in place and the companies who are doing this business are seeing that it's tightening up and they're less and less, municipalities and towns who are willing to accept the byproducts, which are not, do not have to be labeled or spoken out in uniform because they're proprietary. And I would just personally hate to see any of this substance being spread on roads where there are children and schools and nobody knows what this stuff is. So I think this is a proactive move. I'm very happy to come back and see that this is being done. I think it's a smart thing to do, and I think it will keep us from driving some problems down the road. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Ross Gold, I live in the Town of Red Hook. First, I want to thank you all for bringing this resolutions to the table. It's very important to be taking this proactive step. Just for the record, I think you may all know this. The toxic chemicals that are used in the fracking process are known to have endocrine disruptors and other poisons that are going to basically wind up causing brain lesions, many health problems, cancer in the areas where they're fracking. You know, I actually took a trip about three summers ago to Dimick, Pennsylvania, where it was, where it's ground zero for fracking. And I was in a woman's home who lived about, you know, I would say about 50 to 60 feet from where there was an actual drill pad where they were doing drilling on her property. She leased out her property. And she was suffering from brain lesions. She, her entire water supply was polluted. She had, they had to have bottled water bussed in for her to not only drink, but for her to shower. And she was extremely concerned about the health of her children. And I think today, by moving forward with these, we're taking a great step to protect the health of our children. Because once these fluids get into the groundwater or into our drinking supply, they can not come out. And so you are taking every step, and just thank you very much. I really appreciate it.
Any other comments on these three issues? Well, I'll give you a couple minutes. Dick Franklin was here, and he wanted to speak at the public hearing, but he had to leave. And he gave us a bunch of paperwork that'll be on file here, but he just asked if I could read three paragraphs that he had highlighted, so I assured him that I would read that at the public hearing here. And as you can see, it's a little bit of paperwork. The first one he asked if I would read, which is, "It is well-known that radon, radon-222 is present in natural gas. Published reports by R. H. Johnson of the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency, N. C. V. Gogolak of the U.S. Department of Energy also addresses this issue. Radon is present in natural gas from Marcellus shale at much higher concentrations than natural gas from wells in Louisiana and Texas. Marcellus shale is eight to 32 times background. This compares to an average radium-226 in surface soil in New York State of .81 picocuries per gram." And the last paragraph he asked me to read of all his little carries, "We calculate the number of excess lung cancer deaths for New York State. Our results that the potential number of fatal lung cancer deaths due to radon and natural gas from the Marcellus shale range from 1,182 to 30,448." And this is different, as I said, different information that he provided for us here, which I will give to Sue and ask if you can, you know, put it in the file.
Sure.
Along with the public hearing comments. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to comment on the disposal, the spreading of the waste product, the spreading of it on our highways, or the prohibition of fracturing in the Town of Red Hook?
Will all this information be available in package form from Sue?
Which information, the comments?
The whole panoply of subjects.
Well, we have the copies of the town law, and they are also on our website. And we'll have minutes from the meeting and comments made at the meeting tonight will be in our minutes that will also be on our website.
And that's all publicly available?
Yes, it is, yes, it is. And you can even get a printed copy at the Town Hall if you came in to see, Sue.
That's all right. Thanks a lot.
Yep. Okay, I guess no one else, oh, yes.
Excepting written comments, and so is there an eight for the written comments or?
That's a good question. Did we decide on that?
I thought we were hoping to close the hearing tonight.
We had planned on closing the hearing tonight and acting on this, didn't we not? Yes, we did.
Yes.
So. So you can write a comment before, up to the time we do that after the public hearing tonight.
Okay.
You know, one of the things I could say is that, some of you don't seem a little bit concerned, is that we've spent a great deal of time researching this so that we protect our aqua, our aquifers, obviously critical to the health and welfare of the community in the town. And we're sitting on top of an aquifer, it's right there. And we have gone to the limits of the law and done a lot of research as to the nature of the law that can be enacted to achieve its very end. And I'm certain we've done, in the time we've put into it, in the time and effort we've put into it, that we've done the very best job we can at this time. If we find there's any shortcomings in the future, we'll be quick to jump on it. I can assure you of that as well.
And we've had at least three town committees review the work, the zoning review committee, the conservation advisory council, the planning board. The attorneys worked hard on this, so I think we are all comfortable with the wording as it is. And similar laws have been upheld in other towns.
Yes, you'd like to speak?
Yes. My name's David Russo. So I appreciate the law I wanted to pass as well. I just, I just don't know why the word brine is not defined in the definitions. And I think that it should be. That's my statement from the record. If you're going to have a law titled, "A Local Law to Prohibit Brine on Town Roads", that sounds like a local law to prohibit saltwater on town roads. And if you don't have brine defined in your definitions, I think the law falls short. If you bury it into the interpretation of other paragraphs, that's problematic, in my opinion. So I still want to state that I believe that that's the case, and I think you should define brine in the definitions. Thank you.
I certainly understand your position, but I think the whole law pretty much, you know, short of the title, as you say, pretty much says exactly what brine was specifically speaking of.
I think what you're.
I don't know if you're hearing at the public hearing. You're debating and just thwarting what I'm saying.
Right.
And disagreeing and saying, no, we're not going to do it essentially, which I find is surprising.
Where you're reading brine is not actually in the law. That is in, that is in.
So we need to double-check.
I'm not sure.
I'm looking at.
Looking at local law right here.
So why did I get this instead of what you have? This looks very similar, but.
No, that's what you have. You have the legislative intent and so on. Yeah, you've got the same thing I've got here.
Yours is a little bit different, though. It says, "Local Law Number A." Mine doesn't say that. Maybe I'm looking at a different document.
This is, this is the law.
This is, you know, how long we've been talking about, yeah.
Why, so I, what I say, what I'm looking at is not the proposed law?
No, it is, but you see, that was of 2012. We started talking about this last fall.
So you're saying I got last week?
No, I didn't read your, I have not read your version of it exactly as.
This is brought to me by my clerk.
By my deputy.
Is that the wrong document?
Well, I was not there.
I know, I just need you to tell me if I've been looking at.
I believe it pretty much says what we have here, doesn't it?
Yeah, because this is dated October of 2012.
The law we're passing says May, says today.
The subject's not changed.
No, I think it's basically the, right.
Just to make sure I'm not totally on different pages.
Chris, did we make any changes from that original one?
It's the same. We made some slight changes. Do I have to rewrite the one that goes, I don't know what you got?
Oh, no.
Probably some, you know, what else?
Didn't say brine, it says disposal of the waste product.
But it says. I'm just proposing.
It says brine prohibition. Are you looking at hydraulic fracturing brine at present? That way, it's intentionally wrong, and I might understand why it's intentionally going illegally. But I don't want to debate whether, I don't want to debate either or. I think we've heard the comment, so, thanks.
It sells out all the negative aspects of it. The law says it doesn't.
Well, no, this is exactly what I had in my folder, is exactly what David received.
Here's the law from Ulster County, which I was referring to, the legislator in Lopez said. Just for your information.
Yeah. Well, we did, we did statewide research on all of this.
I'm sure you did. Everyone does research. We have a book here. It comes in the conversation. And here's the correspondence.
It's just that day.
This is the, and he had the same concern as I did. I think that's just another piece of legislation that's, so it's just another thing.
There was an original draft that was a proposed 2012, but it wasn't actually introduced. So when we introduced it, we gave it an A of 2013.
That's right, right, yeah.
And the text and the.
Yeah, I don't think so, looks the same.
So, Chris, it doesn't matter if that title is that?
Well, what was introduced was the one that had the title, "A Local Number A of 2013." That's the one that was introduced, I think. Right, that was the discussion one, but it's the exact same as what the filing would be, what you have right there. It's the same, same exact thing, except one says, "Local Law Number One." When we're in discussion stage, they're given A, B, C, and D to track them. Then once it's passed by the Town Board, then they're given an official, you know, number one, local law number one. Do you have the right document there? You weren't given anything incorrect.
When discussion will be going, we can talk about that through one.
If you want.
Okay. So, any more comments from the public on these three issues related to hydraulic fracturing? That is the spreading of the hydraulic fracturing brine on our roads, the disposal of waste byproducts or any other waste products from hydraulic fracturing process, or the hydraulic fracturing being defined in our heavy industry and prohibited in the Town of Red Hook?
Hi, my name's Abby Hart. I actually live in Mylin, so my question is about the area. I mean, my mailing address is Red Hook, so I wasn't really sure where, what the, I just moved here, so I don't really know where, like, where the line, you?
We can be heard.
We're just talking about the Town of Red Hook.
So that's.
The township of Red Hook.
A smaller area than the, like, mailing address.
If you go out 199, the town line's somewhere in Peelerville there. Near the giant fork, right.
Where the big fork is in the road.
So that's the township of Mylin, and then. So that's a township of Mylan, and then we're Red Hook here, even though you have a Red Hook mailing address.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yep.
I have another comment. I think that the penalties of $1,000 for the infractions, putting brine on the road is too rough.
Yeah.
I think that the penalties are really meaningless if it's just $1,000 per infraction. I think that the penalty for violating this proposed law should be $25,000 to $50,000 per infraction. If you're going to have a penalty that's to deter violation, then it should mean something to this industry or to people who would want to just get rid of something illegally. Now, I don't think $1,000 does it. So that's probably two cents.
All right. Once again, any more comments from the public related to these issues? There being none, I will move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Any further discussion by the board? All in favor?
Aye.
Now, we have the next public hearing scheduled is, it's amending Chapter 143 of the Code of Red Hook entitled zoning. Mind reading that notice as well, Sue?
Notice of public hearing, Town of Red Hook. Please take notice that a public hearing will be held by the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook on May 14, 2013, at 8:45 PM local time at the Town Hall, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York, 12571, to hear all interested persons on the proposed local law, Number D, proposed of 2013, entitled "A Local Law Amending Chapter 143 of the Code of the Town of Red Hook, entitled zoning, to make a minor adjustment to the dimensional requirements in the traditional neighborhood development, TND zoning district. The amendment will clarify and modify certain provisions of the code and make minor adjustments to the dimensional requirements in the TND district. Please take further notice that copies of said proposed local law are available for review at the Town Hall, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York, 12571. All interested persons will be given an opportunity to be heard in person or by directing comments and writing to the Town Board, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York, 12571. All reasonable accommodations will be made for persons with disabilities. In such a case, please notify the town clerk in advance at the above address or by phone, 845-758-4606, so that arrangements can be made. By order of the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook, dated April 9, 2013, Sue McCann, Town Clerk, Town of Red Hook. And this was also in our two official newspapers. Information was sent to surrounding towns, sent to the villages, posted at the Town Hall, and on our website.
Does anyone, I will now open the public hearing. Does anyone from the public have comments on these modifications to our traditional neighborhood district in our zoning law code? There being none, I'll ask again, but I'll ask any board members. We've all spoken to this issue at length.
Yeah.
Does anybody else have anything?
No, no more.
It just kind of simplifies it and clarifies it, is what it really amounts to.
We had some unintended consequences of some wording.
For those, I think I'd make a comment, though, for those who think that the local government works by stamp, automatic. I think this new proposed zoning amendment is based upon the fact that planners and volunteers in the Town of Red Hook created a zoning package, as you know, some time ago, called Centers and Green Space Plan. And in that plan, there was a subject called the Traditional Neighborhood District, the Development District. And there were certain rules and regulations about the prospect of developers in the future in the Town of Red Hook building new units and how they would have to conform to the new zoning. But since that law was passed, people in the business, in other words, developers, actual contractors, when they start to apply the rules that were created, they begin to see that maybe it doesn't fit exactly, or maybe there's a better idea to allow for what everybody's interested in, which is appearances and efficiency, that sort of thing. And this new amendment is because a developer brought to the attention of the Town of Red Hook government the fact that the zoning as enacted should be tweaked. I think that's a famous word they use today. That it should be modified and changed to allow for practical, real-life situations. So hopefully, the flexibility of our laws is in play through amendment.
Thank you, Bill. That really explained it right in a nutshell.
Because it's all very technical.
Now, after that being more thoroughly explained, does anyone from the public have a comment in either direction? There being none, any more from the board?
Yeah.
I would move that we close the public hearing on the modified, zoning modifications in our traditional neighborhood districts.
So move.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next, we have public comment period, for comments from the public in general, and then we'll go on to the business at hand. Does anyone wish to speak to the board about any subject or anything at all?
Ah.
Yes, sir?
You seem to close out the public without making any regard to the public out there. You know, not in this room, but people who are going to watch the television. Isn't, shouldn't you have it open for a certain amount of time for comment for other responsible parties, maybe who could not get here? They should be given a chance as citizens of the town to make their comments heard. In other words, you're reserving the power amongst yourselves and getting rid of the desires of the general public and wiping us out by declaring a subject closed.
Actually, we have been discussing this for many months, probably six months and longer.
I think for eight.
And, pardon?
I think maybe for a year when we first talked about it.
Yeah, for a year. And it's on, all of our discussions on this board are on TV every Monday night. Panda shows the actions of the town. And we try to be as transparent and open as possible, engage the public. It's a matter of people either showing up or watching Panda. And this, none of this should be new, or there's no reason that it need be new to anybody who lives in town here. I speak to people on the street all the time. I've had many people come up to me and ask me questions about this fracking laws we've been discussing, actually, over a period of months. So I guess that convinced me that the public really knew what was going on in the discussions we've been having. So I'm certainly happy to have you make comments tonight, and I hope that this has been a transparent, open discussion through the medium of electronics, modern communication.
Well, you're a one member of the board, and you're satisfied. That's one. But there are a lot more concerned people in the public in the town.
Yes, there are. As Harry said, that we've done our best to notify everybody, you know, through Panda and through discussing this very subject at, you know, considerable number of Town Board meetings that were always open to the public, you know, announcing when the public hearing would be. So, you know, short of knocking on everyone's door in the town, I don't know how we could really give better notification to the general public.
Maybe by calling a public referendum, you know, a public referendum would be very broad, broad casting.
No, that would never work. I mean, you're talking about a...
Don't be too sure, John.
No, you're talking about an ultimate democracy that, you know, unfortunately, you can't really have in practice. I mean, in any democracy, there's certain trust you have to have in those people you elect to office. Granted, you don't want to trust them too much because you want to keep your eye on them and what they're doing and how they're doing it. But in this town, I think we feel satisfied, thanks to Panda, a really good administration. And, you know, Sue McCann, I'm sure, can explain to you the amount of work she does in the clerk's office every day, in the supervisor's office, and all of us, you know, in our regular daily activities, as Harry says, Jim. But, you know, transparency is there. You can watch it on Panda. You can come to our meetings. You can call the office here and speak to anybody and ask about what's going on. And, but we can't, you know, democracy doesn't allow us to go to everybody's house, make sure they know everything, or to have referendums by everybody in the community on any subject that comes up. It would take forever to run a town government in that way. But the spirit of what you're interested in, believe me, it's being handled in the town. I don't think you should worry.
We have a newspaper now that actually has printed articles on this subject.
Then every homeowner receives a copy of that.
Yeah.
So Sarah does a wonderful job covering the Town Board meetings.
The board is sitting right there.
Oh, did she represent the newspaper?
She does.
Yes.
Why, could I put up a question on that?
Well, I don't know.
Sorry, Sarah.
We don't have a local address for the newspaper. And we who are not, have not access to the web would also like to know how to get in contact with you.
Well, there's an address listed in the masthead of the paper. If you look in the first page where it lists the writers and the publisher, there's also a P.O. box for a Red Hook address where you can submit comments and letters to the editor.
I look and I look and I'm...
I'll give you a card, and then you'll have it.
Now, do you live in Red Hook or Mylan?
I live in Red Hook.
Or if you live in...
You will like, I have something for you.
Okay.
Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Please. Do you have additional comments?
No, that's why you have a floor.
Ross Field again. I said a question and I guess a comment. I was curious, you know, a lot of work had been done on the Town Climate Action Plan, and I think some money might, or at least there was, I don't know if there was money invested in working with PACE on that or PACE did that pro bono.
$52,000 worth of work.
Yeah. And so I was just kind of curious where that was in the process, if we can expect to be actually trying to vote on implementing, and actually voting on it, having a part of the town, a part of the town process going forward, town planning?
I, we had a formal presentation by the young lady, whose name is escaping me, who finished the project. And...
Erica.
Thank you. And I honestly, we'll have to look at the minutes to see if we may have adopted it.
The board accepted?
We approved, basically, accepted the report. And there weren't any, like, clear implementation guidelines that would actually affect our planning process. It was more like goals going forward that everyone should keep in mind. And I think the CAC's role then is to remind people of there, so, you know...
So it's not something that needed to be actually adopted?
No, it wasn't necessarily. I mean, I think we officially approved of it. And then as a result, I believe the CAC designed their subcommittees based on the sections of the Climate Action Plan. So I think, from my perspective, I think the CAC is working on it. But we certainly would keep it in mind when, on any of our decisions.
Yeah, I would just ask that as you go forward, when you do the planning, that you think about the carbon impact and then, and what happens when you are, whether you're building a new subdivision, you take a look and you say, okay, what's the energy impact going to be from this new subdivision? What's the water use impact going to be? What's going to happen in 20 years when we're facing a different climate? And how that, how will that subdivision be, you know, an impact in a different climate? And, you know, will make sure we take any steps to meet the energy reduction goals that's set up in the Climate Action Plan? And also limiting, you know, spread, your sprawl, and so that we're keeping so that...
I can answer a lot of that. If you look at, we just passed about a year and a half ago, some major zoning. And as part of that zoning, there's an environmental impact statement. It's actually still online, very comprehensive, and it outlines all of the impacts in every way possible of that zoning in terms of the impact on the environment, the impact on, you know, on the quality of life, the population, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. It's a multi, it's a very comprehensive analysis. And the impact on the water, the water supply, et cetera, et cetera. It'll be worthwhile for you to read and perhaps you'll...
The reason why I bring up the concern is in the, in the process with Feller Newmark, it doesn't seem like there was any consideration of the energy use impact that this would have. And on whether or not it would, this new subdivision, how the Climate Action Plan, how it would fit into the Climate Action Plan. So I just ask that as you're going forward with that, you start bringing that into your consideration.
Because a lot of what's happening there had been addressed in this townwide rezoning that we did in that environmental impact statement. So if you read that, it will tell you, for instance, the change in the, in the potential population of the town, which was actually diminished by the zoning, the change in the build-out of the town, which is diminished by that zoning. And it's all spelled out in detail. And what's happening on Feller Newmark falls within, within province of that analysis.
What's the name again of the...
The environmental impact statement. It's online.
For which?
For the, for the zoning we passed on July 11th of...
Centers and Green Spaces.
Of 2012. And was it 2012? No, 2011. And it, it was a major rezoning, and it's still
online.
Okay. Thanks, Eric.
You're welcome.
Okay. Tape change. We'll hold a minute. To continue with the public comment period, are there any other comments from the public? All right. There being none, we're moving to the business at hand.
Harold has his hand up.
I'm sorry, sir.
It might be off subject, but, and I wasn't here in the beginning, but where is our illustrious leader, the supervisor?
She's not here this evening.
She's unavailable.
Is there any reason, you know?
Yeah, the democracy does not require us to explain everybody's personal life, you know, and things. But officially, the supervisor of the Town of Red Hook is unavailable for the meeting tonight, and it's being run by the deputy supervisor, James Ross. And that's where we go.
That's very cut and clear.
That's exactly clear.
But in a democracy, as you can see with our cabinet in the nation, they can be swayed, purchased, in other words. But that's not...
Don't start suggesting that now to us.
That subject is a little offhand, too. Yes, I agree with you. But no, she just, she couldn't be with us this evening and asked all of us to conduct a meeting, which we were all more than happy to do. And she puts a lot of time in, so...
Well, let me clarify, that was not an accusation. And if you received it that way, I'm sorry.
No.
Not at all. That's fine. Okay. Now, we'll go into the resolutions.
So, if I could...
Yes, Chris, I was gonna ask.
This is why I'm...
The waterfront resolution, as you told me, yep.
So the first series of resolutions that you see on that list, they're all relate to the group of fracas laws, A, B, and C. So in order to consider the adoption of those laws, we first need to look at our SEER process and our LWRP, our Local Waterfront Revitalization Program. So you should have in front of you, in one of your stacks, the Local Waterfront Revitalization Review that Michelle, for your planner, has prepared for you to review. And it describes the policies that are in your LWRP and compares the, this particular set of actions, all three of them, to the LWRP point by point in the policies that are there. And she outlines proposed analysis of that. And you all had a chance to look at that, quite extensively, I believe. So if you are prepared, you could approve her draft of the consistent determination, which indicates that the Town Board has reviewed the proposed action against the policies of the Town's Local Waterfront Revitalization Program, and is determined that the proposed action is consistent with the policies of the LWRP.
Well, I make a motion that the board accept the review and assessments that the proposed three resolutions are consistent with the LWRP as set forth in that extensive memo, Mark Planner.
I would second that, Bill.
Is that okay, Sue?
You don't object to us doing the three of them together, do you?
No, no, it is actually one, because the seeker analysis is all three together.
Okay. Any further discussion from the board members?
No.
There being none, I'll call for a vote.
Aye.
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 So then we'll go on to the seeker analysis itself, and again, Michelle Greger-Planner has prepared a very extensive review for you. It is a, yeah? Part two of the environmental assessment form in NECD, and I think that we probably don't want to read that verbatim because it's about 40 pages long, but we did, I think, receive that from Michelle, and everybody had a chance to look at it, and we further, I think, distributed from her office some of the references that were in that document, just so that folks have, if you wanted to go further into some of the background information. So what we're looking at here is Michelle's EAF, seeker part three, and NECD regarding the adoption of chapter 49 and amendments to chapters 84 and 143 of the town code. And she very, I think extensively goes through the impacts on land, the impacts on water, that particularly identifies impacts on wetlands, and the aquifer, as I think Jim mentioned earlier, surface and groundwater resources in the community, the air impacts of plants and animals, and agriculture, specifically identifies those impacts, aesthetic resources and historic and archaeological resources, transportation and open space. We have, I think then, a draft NECD, which is then based on that part three analysis, which identifies the town of Red Hook is a primarily rural community with predominant land uses, it's agriculture and low to medium density residential, small historic towns and villages surrounded by agricultural and forested lands, open space, and that heavy industry is inconsistent with that vision, that this would, proposed action would prohibit high volume, hydraulic fracturing, more specifically drilling for shale gas in the community, and again, goes through the very specific analysis. And again, I'm not going to read you the whole thing, you all had a chance to review that in, I think, great detail. But if you have any questions, I'd be happy to discuss that.
No, I think we've talked about that for a considerable amount of time at this point.
So you have a resolution in front of you, a resolution determining significance and authorizing filing of notice of the NECD for the adoption of a new chapter 49 entitled fine prohibition to the town code, adoption of amendment to chapter 84 of the code of the town of Red Hook entitled garbage, excuse me, garbage, rubbish and refuge, and adoption of amendment to chapter 143 of the code of the town of Red Hook entitled. And that is a resolution that for the reasons set forth in the attached notice of negative declaration, the board hereby in terms of this proposed action will not have a significant adverse impact on the environment, and that a draft environmental impact statement will not be prepared and authorizes the supervisor to file a notice and take all other actions as may be required by law, and that would require a.
All right, you all.
Well, I still move and ask for a vote.
Okay.
Second.
All right, we'll start with you, Bill.
Aye.
Harry?
Aye.
Aye. So that means at this point we've approved the NECD on the environmental assessment.
All three.
For all three of them together.
So the next resolution on your list would be authorizing adoption by the town board of local law number As, proposed at 2013, and that is the local law. Again, perhaps just to reiterate the discussion that we sort of had at the public hearing, the substance of the law is a prohibition on the application of natural gas and oil production wastes on any town road or property, whether as a de-icing substitute or for any other purpose. And the application is specifically defined as a physical act that takes in natural gas and oil production byproducts on water or town roads, and natural gas and oil production byproducts is specifically defined fairly technically, but associated with it produced as a product of, a byproduct, excuse me, of the exploration, drilling or extraction of natural gas and oil or other subsurface hydrocarbons. So, you know, we have some fairly technical definitions that I think are specific. We also have, in addition to the penalty for violations for, as an unclassified misdemeanor with a fine of $1,000, we also have included a civil penalty in the amount of $15,000 per violation. And the other thing that I would point out is that when this was drafted, the application definition is very specific, because it says each time a person is, each application is a separate and distinct violation, so that that really goes to the, to make sure the violations and how that could be enforced, and I think that's the, you know, that's important to understand, so.
That would relate to another public comment.
Yes, exactly. Right.
Okay, now, you fellows like to read the now therefore, the resolved, and then?
Yeah, I would move the board based upon the fact, you know, that we're the lead agency, and that we've just agreed, if you do deliberation, it's the best interest of the town to adopt this local law in the form that we've all had much discussion about, the so-called biological inhibit brine on town roads. So I therefore move the board that we adopt the local law A proposed 2013, now referred to as a local law number one of 2013. Is that right?
Yes.
Local law one 2013, entitled a local law to prohibit brine on town roads.
Second.
Is there some more? Turn your page.
Yeah, well, she had the number two of that, too. Just one more. It just says here, Martha, town clerk.
Well, that goes without saying, right? But if you want me to also.
Read it.
That in addition to that, that the town clerk is, would be directed by our vote to enter the said law in the minutes of the meeting and in the town code for the town of Red Hook, and to give due notice of the adoption of said law, the Secretary of State of New York and to take all other actions as may be required by law.
And Harry seconded that. Now, for discussion, I myself am perfectly happy with the way we define it in the law. That was basically our only comment concerning the three of these there. Chris, are you comfortable with the way we define it?
Yeah, I think that it's pretty clear. You know, again, I think the description of the title is really to call attention to it. If something, if somebody's, you know, looking at the law substantively, they're going to see that the law applies to, you know, production brine, byproducts of oil and gas production.
This is the key paragraph to me.
Yeah, but I'm happy with it. I just want to make sure we're all comfortable, because we did have, you know, a comment on that.
It's a really, a well-worded definition of what we're talking about, which is, the brine is maybe the generic comment, but this defines the specific.
It does, the brine, you know, it might be, when you look at it, it says brine, but I think the brine is very thoroughly defined throughout the law.
Yeah.
Any other discussion, members?
Just to add that our highway superintendent has assured us that our current, applicable brine, or whatever you want to call it, if it's applied on the highways, does not include any gas or oil production byproducts currently.
That's right, and, you know, the gentleman brought the Ulster County thing, where if you notice this year, Ulster County actually was on 12, not using brine, not fracking brine, but other brine, because they found it's a much more efficient way to do that, because it, you know, they use less salt and it clings to the road, but I think our brine is thoroughly defined. Okay. All right, roll call vote, starting with you.
Aye.
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 Okay, so our next resolution on the list is the resolution authorizing the adoption by the town board of the town of Red Hook of local law A proposed of 2013. That is the resolution that relates to the law amending chapter 84 to agree with disposal of natural gas or oil drilling waste products in the town's Red Hook. And again, that, do you want me to read the resolution portion of the, the now, the resolved? We have a number of recital identifying that it's been published, and seek to review and that sort of thing.
I think one of us can just read it now therefore. You want to read this one?
Sure. Now therefore be resolved by the town board of the town of Red Hook as follows, that the town board hereby adopts said local law B proposed of 2013, now referred to as local law two of 2013, entitled a local law amending chapter 84 of the town code to prohibit the disposal of natural gas or oil drilling waste products in the town of Red Hook, and that the town clerk hereby is directed to enter said law in the minutes of this meeting and the town code of the town of Red Hook to give due notice of the adoption of the said local law to the Secretary of State of New York and to take all other actions as may be required by law, and I so move.
Second.
No.
No.
Roll call vote, we'll start with you this time, Brenna.
Aye.
Harry?
Aye.
Yes.
And myself also.
And then we have local law number C, we have a resolution authorizing adoption by the town board of the town of Red Hook, the local law that we received proposed of 2013, which is a local law that prohibits heavy industry. And again, this is a law that really clarifies the existing code. We have a provision that's code that identifies prohibited uses, so this provision specifically says, you know, by defining those, we mean that we don't permit heavy industry, which we don't permit now, and in particular, we include in the definition of heavy industry, natural gas and oil exploration are prohibited throughout town. So that's the substance of that provision, and that is an amendment to your zoning law. So in addition to the other reviews and the public hearing and so forth, this one was submitted to the planning board and to the Dutch County Department of Planning and Development. Dutch County Department got back and said it was a matter of local concern. Planning board expressed its support for the law.
Okay, now, Brenna, would you like to read it now therefore?
Sure. Now therefore be it resolved by the town board of the town of Red Hook as follows, that the town board hereby adopts said local law C of 2013, now referred to as local law number three of 2013, entitled a local law to prohibit heavy industry, and that the town clerk hereby is directed to enter said local law in the minutes of this meeting and in the town code of the town of Red Hook to give due notice of the adoption of said local law to the Secretary of State of New York, and to take all other actions as may be required by law, and I so move.
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
And the only discussion I might have on this, this was a difficult decision for me. I had never even thought twice about not allowing the brine to be spread on our roads, because I personally have a problem with salt that we need. And as far as the waste, you know, we prohibit, so dumping and everything else, so I had no question about that. But when it comes to hydraulic fracturing, I'm not opposed to it. I think the whole process does need more study statewide, and there's probably areas that it can be of very good use, and particularly with the appetite that we seem to have with energy, as much as we try and trim our appetite. However, I do believe, you know, based on the lay of our land, our aquifer, our population, that the town of Red Hook itself, and not that I'm a proponent of NIMBY, you know, not, you know, nothing in my backyard, but I feel that the, because of our aquifer, the town of Red Hook itself is not a site that we would want, or you would want to have the hydraulic fracturing, just because of the availability, the population availability of open land far enough from any aquifers. So that's, that's why I myself am personally in favor of it. I don't necessarily make that comment.
Okay.
Well, and I think our existing zoning expresses where the town thinks we should be going by previously having prevented heavy industry, so I think that speaks to our priorities of preserving our farmland, protecting the aquifer, and so I just think this is in keeping with, actually with what we have so far.
It does, and it clarifies, you know, it includes it in the definition of our heavy industry, which it had not been before, Brenna, yes.
And to Harold's point about people not having time to comment or whatever, I mean, we have been discussing this for so long and discussing that the laws were coming up, and I haven't had one person say to me that they were not supportive, and also the fact that the five of us who have different viewpoints all have come together, I think that speaks to.
Yeah, we have pretty thoroughly discussed, so discussion of all these subjects.
By the same.
Yeah. Do you guys want to add anything?
No.
Nothing. That being said, I'll call for a roll call vote, I'll start at your end again, Bill.
Aye.
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 Yes.
Okay, I think we have another resolution that is on our list for consideration, and that is for, these are actually a series of two resolutions relating to the TND, zoning amendment, local law, the technical correction, if you will. So the first one is, under packet, a resolution determining significance and authorizing filing of a notice of negative declaration for local law number D proposed of 2013. This is relating again to the TND, and I believe you had received in advance a draft EAF part two and NECD for that lock coverage requirement, reviewing the description of that action and indicating the.
Excuse me. I'm flushy.
Excuse me. That there were no significant impacts on any of the identified areas that were a positive impact on historic and archaeological resources, and that was the only, that was the only item identified in the part three that you, or excuse me, the part two that you received, and on the NECD itself, which very simply identifies the adoption, and that identifies no significant impacts.
So first we should do the resolution for the NECD, correct?
Yes, that would be the first one.
Is that the one I got?
Yeah, same thing.
Yep, yes. Want me to read that one?
No.
Now therefore be it resolved that for reasons set forth in the attached negative declaration, the board hereby determines that the proposed action will not have a significant adverse impact on the environment, and that a draft environmental impact statement will not be prepared and authorizes supervisor to take all other actions as required by law.
Second then.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can I ask you, I'm sorry to do a roll call vote, please put your record.
We all said yes.
Aye.
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 All right, and then we have a resolution authorizing adoption of local law number D proposed of 2013, and again, this was a zoning amendment, this was circulated to the planning board, which indicated that it was in support of this, and circulated to the Dutch County Department of Planning and Development, which just found that the law was a matter of local concern.
You want to read that?
You guys want me to read that now therefore again?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. Now therefore be it resolved by the town board of the town of Red Hook, that the town board hereby adopts said local law D proposed of 2013, now referred to as local law number four of 2013, entitled a local law amending chapter 143 of the code of the town of Red Hook entitled zoning, to make a minor adjustment to the dimensional requirements in the traditional neighborhood development, TND, zoning district, and that the town clerk hereby is directed to enter said local law in the minutes of this meeting and the code, the town code of the town of Red Hook to give the notice of adoption and said local law to the Secretary of State of New York and to take all other actions as may be required by law. So move.
Second.
And any further discussion?
No.
Bill explained it pretty thoroughly before. Well, so. Well, so Chris doesn't get angry with us, we better have a roll call vote. Brenda?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Aye.
All in favor?
The next one on the resolution list relates to a new public hearing, set or considered setting, and that relates to an item that we discussed, I think, at the last meeting, a local law that would make a technical correction in the provisions relating to the zoning board of appeal and clarification in your local law of the number of folks, the number of votes necessary for certain actions. And I think the best way to explain this is that there was a, I think, a change in the state law, we discussed this previously, which changed the standard number of members to five, and your number remained at seven, which is permitted by state law. I think at some point, there was a change in the language in your discussion of voting requirements, and that picked up the language that would be applicable for a five-member board. I think that the board has been advised and has always followed the provisions that are applicable for a seven-member board. Because they are a seven-member board, they've always followed the requirement for, you know, four is a majority, and so forth. But this is something that was, I think, called to our attention as, you know, potential inconsistency in the language. I don't think it's been any inconsistency in the execution. I think the zoning board is well aware of the general principles and the provisions of law that require, you know, a majority of the full number of the board, and that's how they've carried out their activities. But this would bring this section of law into, I think, more clear language that makes it more clear to the reader that because you have a seven-member board, this is the vote that's required for a normal vote, which is a majority of the full number of the board, of the seven, and then for the board's intentions, contrary to a recommendation of the county.
Would require five.
Right.
Yeah, for a super majority.
Right. And again, that is how the board's been proceeding.
Yes.
Because that's what state law would require. So this is really just bringing this section of the code up.
You say, did you do that already?
Yes. I'm quite sure that that's what the board's been doing.
Yeah, actually, the board has always done that, because they've just, initially, nobody was even aware of the inconsistency when the zoning law was reprinted in 93.
This is just to set the hearing, right?
This is to set a hearing on this local law, which is Local Law Number F proposed of 2013.
Do we have a date in mind?
Yeah, I hadn't thought about that, because how about, how does the board feel?
We may need more than, next week isn't adequate time to make notice.
That's kind of close, yeah.
Well, we don't have time to notice legally, I don't think.
Right.
Yeah, isn't that interesting? The fourth Wednesday is only a week after the second Tuesday.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Should we do it in the May?
June, I think.
Could go to June.
June 11th?
Is that the date?
It's June 11th, yep.
And I guess by the time.
So usually, we start with the right away with any public hearing, so why don't we say 7:30, if that's what you think, after the pledge?
I'd rather it was earlier than that.
Do we start right at 7:30?
7:35.
7:45, yeah.
7:35.
Right?
We didn't today, though, but, did we?
Well, I guess you have a presentation for today.
See, I mean.
We had a presentation.
Yeah, we had a presentation. So, okay, let's say 7:45. We'll start with the supervisor's report and the clerk's report, and then at 7:45, the public hearing, if that seems.
All right, and so that's July 11.
June.
I'm sorry.
June, June.
You know, at our age, you can't be giving these months away.
So notice to be published by June 1.
By June 1?
Yes.
But we have to do this by form of resolution?
Yes, if you could, you have a resolution in front of you in the packet, if you could consider adoption of the resolution as written.
Well, I so move to adopt the resolution as written. We've just discussed, to set the public hearings from June 11, 2013, at 7:45 PM, on the proposed local law, Number F, of 2013.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We got through that one. We're ready for that one.
So where does that put us on this evening's agenda?
Dog parks.
Dog parks.
Dog parks.
In which we have another resolution now.
We have gone to the dogs.
Yeah.
So we have to set that public hearing?
So I do have, and maybe, I do have a resolution for you to consider to establish a different public hearing, but, you know, perhaps some other cable would like to talk about this first, before we get into the resolution.
Sure. Well, the town of Rhinebeck has already adopted a dog park law, and the plan is to have a dog park shared with the residents of Red Hook on Stone Church Road by the soccer fields out there on property that the town of Rhinebeck owns. And mostly, this would be done by, the work would be done by volunteers, and the law sets up a steering committee that would have three members from each town participating. I think the initial fee they're considering is $20. Our town clerk and Rhinebeck's town clerk would sell tags, and the town of Rhinebeck would be providing those tags, and also, the town of Rhinebeck would be doing the maintenance of the park. What have I missed? There are regulations that concern dog and handler behavior, and the town of Rhinebeck, I think, can change the dog park laws, right?
Well, and I guess what I would add is that the town adopted, the town of Rhinebeck adopted a law and really was looking to establish a dog park in there, within, as you say, there exists a park area. And I guess they, through discussion with the AgHOP committee, with some Red Hook residents, expressed some interest in having Red Hook residents permitted to use this facility, and so they proposed that both towns cooperate in the administration and operation of the park. The town of Rhinebeck has indicated that they felt that since the park is in the town of Red Hook, they believe that the town needs to adopt all of the same regulations with regard to dogs and handlers that they had adopted, so they've asked us to consider adoption of their provisions. We modified them slightly to relate to our town and our code, but substantively, they're the town of Rhinebeck's provisions. So we did not really change them substantively, we just adopted what they had proposed as their, you know, their park provisions, because it really is their park. So they will require things like, as Brenda indicated, individual additional licenses, so you have to have a license for your dog anyway, but in addition, you have to have a special tag to use the dog park, and those fees will be put into a special fund by Rhinebeck and applied to, you know.
Well, Red Hook's not going to collect any of those.
Well, Red Hook may be collecting them as part of their issuing of the town, but they're going to turn them over for some of the municipal agreement to Rhinebeck to account for them and to authorize expenditure of them.
So they want us to pass a local law to share, the plan for shared services and the intermunicipal agreement?
Yeah.
Those are free?
The local law is what would be the subject of the public hearing, and then assuming that we adopt the local law, we can also consider by resolution, adopting the intermunicipal agreement, which would really be the implementing agreement between the two towns in terms of administration.
So procedurally, we first pass the resolution to set the public hearing?
Yeah, I think so, because I think, yeah.
Then we consider the resolution on the local law, and we consider the intermunicipal agreement? That would be after the hearing.
The intermunicipal agreement, you don't need a public hearing for, even though it's close to a [inaudible].
No, but I, so I think it makes sense to consider the intermunicipal agreement at the same time that we consider adoption of the local law, because it really doesn't make sense to have one without the other, I think. But I wanted to have both of them in front of you, so that you can see what the whole proposal involves. The other thing that I want to point out is that they have proposed that, in addition to police officers, the peace officers who have jurisdiction in that area, that both the town of Red Hook, the dog control officer and the Rhinebeck dog warden be given jurisdiction to police the activities within that park. We have, obviously, both part-time arrangements, so they felt it made sense to have either one of those folks have, you know, an ability to go there. But what their real plan is, according to the committee, is that these are really going to be self-policing, that folks are going to be involved as, what is the word? Not words. Brenda, it's.
Control officer?
No, no, the volunteers.
Stewards.
Right. They're going to ask stewards to be familiar with the rules and help familiarize as volunteers, just as we have volunteers working with our parks now, to help familiarize folks using the park with the rules for using the dog park. Because there are some fairly specific requirements for using a dog park. The whole idea of a dog park is to allow the dog to be in a fenced area, you know, with other dogs off-leash. And so there are some fairly strict rules about, you know, you keep your dog on the leash until you get them to the park. Once they're in the park, they can be off-leash. If they become aggressive, you've got to grab them and get them out of there, you know, put them back on the leash and get them out of there. You know, you need to maintain control over your dog, voice control over your dog, you know, those sorts of things. And obviously, you need to clean up after your dog. You know, there isn't anybody who's going to be prepared to clean up after everybody else's dog, so the folks who are using the park are going to have to be doing it themselves.
So there won't be somebody who'll drop the dog off, go shopping, and then come back with the dog in two hours?
Let's hope not.
Have fun, Fido. Now, the intermunicipal agreement will spell out that our dog warden also has jurisdiction in that dog park, since it is located within the town of Rhinebeck?
That's what, that's what the intermunicipal agreement.
Isn't the park located in Rhinebeck, though?
It's located in Red Hook, that's.
They own the property, but it's in our town.
Right.
Oh, okay. I was thinking, they own, just the other side, yeah, but they own.
That's why this is a bit complex.
Okay.
So, that's for, so the resolution that's in front of you would be to call a public hearing. You have a resolution to establish a public hearing, and again, this is regarding Local Law Number E proposed for the adoption of a new chapter, dog parks. And if you would like to establish your date and the time for that public hearing, you could consider that resolution.
7:50? Think there are other ones?
By the time?
Would take more than five minutes?
Probably not.
The other one, probably not.
So I would say 7:50. If it runs over, it can be a little late, it just can't be early.
What date, the same day?
That was the 11th, was that June 11th?
June 11th.
June 11th. So a notice to be just such.
I thought, Chairman, that, you know, the town board should amend Paul Piastro, who wrote a letter, I've seen it in The Observer, the Red Hook Observer, but he wrote a very nice letter as a fundraiser, inviting people to contribute to the dog park, as we just discussed, and thought it was a really good letter, and, you know, that issue, of course, is so important, try to fund it. So we hope that that gets results.
There was one little discrepancy, one little error in the letter. They're using the old mailing address, 109 South Broadway, so if anybody wants to donate, it's 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook.
Well, that's good.
Yeah, thanks for mentioning that, Bill, because he had done a lot of work to raise money for that, and it's going to be at all donations expense, not taxpayers, so.
I think we already have some results. Some donations hanging.
So we have, I guess we have to pass a resolution authorizing us to have the public hearing on a date. So now, therefore, be it resolved by the town board of the town of Red Hook by a favorable vote of not less than the majority of all the members of the board as follows. Local Law Number E proposed of 2013 is a type-two action which will not require secret review. The town board of the town of Red Hook shall hold a public hearing on June 11, 2013, at 7:50 PM in the town hall, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York, to hear all interested parties on said proposed local law, and at which time and place it shall be determined by the said town board whether to adopt the proposed local law. And the town clerk is hereby authorized and directed to publish notice of said public hearing in the Poughkeepsie Journal and the Kingston Freeman, the official newspapers of said town, on or before. What were the dates for that?
June 1.
June 1?
Mm-hmm.
June 1, 2013, which is not less than 10 days prior to the date of said public hearing.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So be it.
Thank you. Thank you, and it's my long list.
You set that. You set that same night.
That's the 7:45.
Yeah.
And then the dog park, the second public hearing. Just two public hearings, or second night?
Yeah.
So far.
That's all.
Now, the next thing, it says, "Set public hearing for recreation park master plan, but the wetland work is not completed yet," right?
That's correct.
And actually, we already did set public hearing on the Monroe portion of that, so actually, a public hearing is not necessarily required. So we would simply be considering a resolution when the time comes. But we are still waiting for some additional wetland mapping, and as soon as that gets done, then we'll be in a position to consider that. That's the presentation that we had from the engineers at the last meeting.
Right.
A lot of the information, but we just have some final information we want to pull together.
Good, thank you, Chris. Next item I have on this motion is submit application to Dutchess County for Workers' Compensation Insurance Consortium.
No, but that is, I know that's been discussed, and we could, we're really just authorizing Ukraine, I think, to move forward.
To move forward on that, yes. I don't think we need anything of the matter. So, you'd like to make that motion, then, Herr?
All right, I move that we authorize the town supervisor to move forward with this application to Dutchess County for, to cooperate with Dutchess County for the Workbench Compensation Insurance Consortium.
Can you say that three times fast?
I had a hard time getting to it, and I so move.
Second.
Any further discussion? Short of the fact that this stands to save us considerable money in workers' comp, does not, yes.
Hope you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The next item. Brenda?
Nancy's been faithful to you.
I know. Nancy's been so good sitting there.
Yeah, she's hobbled.
So this is the, the report of the street tree inventory that was completed in the fall, and a little bit in March.
Thank you.
And it was done by Cornell Cooperative Extension, so I'm presenting this as a cooperative extension employee, not as a board member.
Did you get one, Susan?
And this is this spreadsheet.
You got mine?
Does that work, Steve? Can you get that?
Do my best.
Okay.
Am I in the way?
Yeah. Okay, so I just want to point out that the inventory analysis was funded by the Forest Service, and the field work that was done with Nancy and company, other master gardeners, et cetera, was paid for by grant monies from the DEC. So what is a SWAT project? SWAT is one of the acronyms that comes before you find the words to fit it, because we're an offshoot of a project at Cornell University. We now have a Hudson Valley SWAT team, it stands for Specialized Weekend Arborist Team, and the purpose is to provide. And the purpose is to provide the opportunity for small communities who would not have probably professional staff on duty or arborists, provide them the opportunity to have a street tree inventory conducted, which is considered a necessary management tool. We inventory public trees only. We use handheld computers or PDAs to collect the data. We analyze the data with software provided by the Forestry Service called iTree. It's free and downloadable on the web. And we use trained master gardeners, as well as this fall in Red Hook, we used some bark students who had worked in the arboretum there, and also our DEC florister participated. So why would we want to do this, and what is the street tree inventory for? Well, it's just a snapshot in time, which is important to note, because if you don't keep it up to date, it loses its importance. And we, we say that you can't manage something if you don't know the quantity or the quality of the resource you're trying to manage. We gather information that the town can use for prioritizing, consider safety issues, planting needs, and maintenance requirements. And like I said, it's an essential tool for management. So the quick summary is that we inventoried 675 sites. Four hundred and fifty of those had trees. Two hundred and twenty-five were identified as planting sites. There were 114 sugar maples. We always look at the most populous tree species, so that was at my bar in Red Hook. Thirty-three of the trees require further consult, which means that we saw something that we, not as, since we're not professionals, we may not designate a tree as hazardous. And so we look for signs that perhaps a professional should examine a tree. So thirty-three is, is kind of a high number. I think it was about eight percent of our trees. Another important number was there are 74 trees that needed immediate pruning. There were 30 dead trees. And the annual ECO benefits were over $70,000. And if you were to replace our trees that were inventoried in their current state and condition and size, they would be worth over 4.1 million dollars. So this is an example of, this is actually a page from our inventory. We collect about 16 fields of data per site or per tree site. This is, it's too wide to fit on one side, so this is the first half. The address, of course, is collected where the tree is located. And I think all of the areas we inventoried in Red Hook, all the trees were in lawns. Often, most often, we do villages where sidewalks are a problem. That was not the case here. We identify the species and the DBH or the diameter at breast height to identify the size. We give maintenance recommendations. Well, we talked about the consult. We say, are there electrical wires or not? We look at the condition of the wood and the leaves. We look at the percent of dead wood, and we get the coordinates, so should somebody have to get back to the tree, they can easily do that. So this, oh, I should turn some-
Just one of those switches.
Okay, so those were the areas that we inventoried in Red Hook. The tree commission identified, identified the most populous areas, and we're limited to doing 1,000 street trees or 12 street lines. So you see up in the top, Pitcher Lane. Down at the bottom left, that's Forest Park. You see Jefferson Heights, Manor, Leno Drive, Linden Acres, College Park, Jefferson Heights, I said that, Echo Valley area and Mill Road, I think. So looking more closely at some of these areas, there's Linden Acres and Pitcher Lane, College Park and Forest Park. What stood out for me with Forest Park is there are far more planting sites, which are the red triangles, than there are trees. So that would be a, a nice area to target for planting. So one number we, we give to, as part of our analysis, is the stocking level. And that's the number of sites that are planted in trees out of all possible sites. So for us, that was two, 450 trees planted out of 674 possible sites. So the stocking level is 67%. And although in the national average is 60%, some communities I've inventoried have had as much as 90. And that's really a community decision. These are the top 10 species. Again, sugar maple you see on top. Now, genus distribution, we look at this because of diversity. Genus is, for example, maple, this is genus Opis genus, and the genus of that is Acer. So the sugar maple, the Norway maple, Japanese maple, all of those are considered one genus, which is Acer. And it's recommended that no more than 20% of any one genus comprises the tree population. So in the areas we surveyed, the maple genus comprises 41%, which is pretty high. But that's, I mean, that's commonly found in all the villages I've inventoried. That's, they're always at least 41%, sometimes 50. So just like with genus, there's a recommendation for how many trees of one species should occupy, should comprise the population. The species would be the sugar maple, or the Norway maple, or the, the Japanese maple. All of those would be a different species. So we see that in Red Hook, the area's inventory, sugar maple is way up there. In fact, we have two species that are over 10%, and I think six that are over 5%. So in future planning, that's something we would look at. So we look at the DBH distribution.
Question.
Yes.
Norway maple is one of the least desirable trees now, isn't it?
Yes, it's often not recommended to be planted because it's invasive.
Okay.
Yeah, feel free to interrupt any time. So this is the DBH distribution. We look at this because it talks about the age of our community forests, it tells about the community's planting patterns in the past. So the ideal is that you would have more younger trees, so the smallest trees are at the left of the chart, and the largest oldest trees are at the right. And what you really want to see is that the highest number of trees is in the younger setting and decreases as you get to the older trees, so that the younger ones are constantly replenishing the ones that are aging out. So this is Red Hook, and this is a community I did before. I think it's cold spring. And you see how they're more in line with the desirable flow here. They had a lot of planting a few years ago, so their trees in three to six-inch range are, are pretty numerable. And then their older trees are almost nonexistent. So we look at the condition of the, the leaves and the wood, and I think we're in pretty good shape. One number to look at more closely is the, the circle with the wood, because we have 24 trees that are in poor condition, and actually, plenty that are dead, so those would need some attention. And just to take a break from the chart, this is what a SWAT team looks like. We, the lady on the left is holding the PDA, the man on the right has the diameter tape, he's measuring the diameter of the tree. And that happened to be in the village parking lot, where we worked a couple of years ago. Another thing we looked at is the maintenance recommendations, and so 66% of our trees need no maintenance. However, 74, I think we mentioned this in the summary, do need immediate prune. So just to further, to explain what these terms mean, there's an example of a high-priority prune situation, where there are some sizable dead limbs, and it's hard to see that on the, the bottom right, there's a person and a car. This is an example of a routine prune, where there might be some smaller dead trees up there, I mean, dead limbs. We might say that these trees need a training because they're young. And so when we're talking about the high priority needs of the forest, we first look at the consult categories, so I think we discussed before, we had 33 that need more attention from a professional, which is a pretty high number. And then the immediate prune ones adding up to 74. We see sugar maple is the winner there, but we'd expect that, since that was the species that had, was most numerous. So the sugar maple was spruced very high pound, but after that, no one species stood We were asked by the tree commission to look at Pitcher Lane, which we did in March, and it's pretty cold. Anyway, there are 133 trees there. I think there are 20-some planting sites. So 85 of those trees, so far more than half, are sugar maples. 16 trees need consult. 21 trees have more than 75% dead wood, and 36 need immediate prune. And thanks to Nancy, here are some pictures of some of the trees that need attention.
Looks like a cactus.
That's architectural interest.
Could, can I just ask you a question? I mean, when you say they need immediate attention, it's for the health of the tree, not necessarily for a danger. Is that correct? I mean, those are two different things. I just want to make sure that, you know-
Well, the people who go out in the field, they have a set of field data, field definitions. And for immediate prune, I think it was Nancy has this in the report, it's dead branches three or inches or greater.
Right, but I mean, sort of looking at those, they're not necessarily things that would be an immediate danger. If, I guess I would say if there were, they should be reported, obviously, sort of through a different track than this sort of inventory structure, right?
Well, like, for those, probably for all three of those, they have been labeled greater than 70%, 75% dead wood. And so when the tree committee looks at the spreadsheet, they would probably not call a pro in, because you know you're just going to take it down, so you'd call, you probably just take those down. If you have dead trees, you're not going to ask an arborist to evaluate them.
Right, but I mean, the purpose of this is to evaluate tree health, not, right?
Not safety concerns.
Right, right, that's what I'm saying.
Those, those pictures look like safety concerns.
Well, yeah. I actually think three trees have been taken down since.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
That's the picture.
But they are, they are dangerous.
And they're falling now.
If, if they are, I guess I would just encourage you to separately from this inventory, you know, talk to the highway super, talk to, you know, the board independently about those, so that they get addressed, as opposed to, you know, having to sit in inventory.
Yeah. We have struggled with this road, because somebody said it was a deed to the road, and then I, I just, they, that-
We had doubts.
Well, I, you know, that they could, we talked about it many times, so they, they would trim, prune the tree, I think, pardon the tree that leaned over the road, but they really needed permission from the landowner. I, I might not be understanding this.
Yeah, no, they would ask the landowner to deal with the tree, because it then belongs to the landowner, and it's not on our property, right?
But if it's in the right-of-way.
Well, if there are trees hanging in the right-of-way, then the highway super would trim them.
Even if the tree, the tree itself is in the right-of-way.
Of course, deed, a lot of, a lot of old deeds in Red Hook still go to the center of the road.
Yeah.
And they'd be at the town, the county, but just has a right-of-way on it.
Right. So what, if you have a, use a road, then what the highway super would do is look at what's threatening the road, and she might trim those.
Yeah.
But then the tree itself, she's going to have to say to the, you're going to have to say to the homeowner, you know, these are trees that, you know, you should really take down.
Yeah, right. Yeah. So.
So there is, right, so we can have a longer conversation, don't we?
Yeah, yeah, right. No, I, I understand what you're saying, yeah.
Okay, all right.
Okay, so up until now, we talked more about the structural characteristics of the trees. So this is just one slide, but some communities consider it the most important. These are the, the benefits of the trees. Now, with the iTree software, we can actually classify the environmental benefits and aesthetic benefits. So it puts a number to what the trees provide for us. A lot of times, people want the dollar value. So the, if you look at the five categories that we look at, it's energy, carbon dioxide, air quality, stormwater, and aesthetic. So after aesthetic, the energy benefit is the greatest in our case, and that comes from reduced air conditioning due to shading and reduced heating due to wind rates. The carbon dioxide, that considers both the carbon dioxide that's sequestered by the trees, as well as the CO2 emissions that are reduced by the energy savings. Air quality has to do with particulate matter and air pollutants being absorbed. The stormwater relates to rainwater interception, and I think our trees intercept far over a million gallons of water per year. And so I should have, I didn't put on the slide, I should have. This is the annual average benefits. And also, we calculate the replacement value of the trees as they are today. I think we mentioned this earlier, over 4.1 million dollars. And the reports that the town gets has many more details on how long these ECO benefits, they rank them by species and average them by tree, so the tree committee will get a lot, far more data. So the next step would be to create a forestry management plan. If you have an inventory, you can go ahead with this, and I know they've been working on this. These are four categories that would be important to have in the plan. Planting, maintenance, outreach, and inventory maintenance. So we'll look at each one of those as briefly. With the, in the planting section, you may want to address stocking goal. You have 67%. Is that high enough? Do you want to increase it? You might want to include planting specs, so if somebody is working on the trees in the town, they use good arboricultural practices, and you probably want to address species diversity, and maybe look at sugar maples. The thing with your sugar maples is, though, that many of them are in poor condition. So when you're looking at what to plant, consider that, too. And just for a break, this is what not to plant. That's my backyard with a Bradford pear. And after two storms, and the Bradford pear's weak forks, it came down. And it used to be a recommended tree for planting, and every, all towns pretty much were planting this, and then everybody all of a sudden realized that it wasn't holding up to strong winds, so it's not recommended anymore. So back to the maintenance, the management plan, another section would be maintenance. This is where you would prioritize what we're going to do. And we talked about the importance of the consult and removals and high-priority prune. Some communities have a citizen pruner program, where they train residents, volunteers, to prune young trees, and in the long run, it really saves the town a lot of money. Also, you'd want an outreach section, but you've been doing such a great job with that. I don't think we can, need to dwell on that, especially with the school outreach and the Arbor Day celebrations. And then I just wanted to mention the importance of maintaining the inventory. This is where most villages and towns fall short. It's a very hard thing to do. You really have to have a dedicated person who's responsible for recording any changes you make to the forest, removals or prunings or new plantings. And it's recommended that you re-inventory one-fifth or 20% of your forest every year, so that every five years, you would have completely redone the inventory to keep it up to date. And that's a, a challenging task. So I, just a shout-out to the committee here for their seven years as a tree city. That's right, isn't it, seven?
Yeah.
And also, so the board understands what's involved with this, these are the four standards that are required for a community to become a tree city. You must have a tree board or department, or we call ours a commission. You must have a tree care ordinance. You must have a forestry program with an annual budget of at least $2 per capita. And that's actually a very easy thing to accomplish when you consider the trees that the highway department has to clean up. And you must have an Arbor Day observance and proclamation. I think you recognize one of these people.
That's a good, that's a good quote.
That's it.
Thank you.
Any questions?
How did you become SWAT?
From being a master gardener, I guess.
Thank you.
Any questions?
How did you become SWAT?
From being a master gardener, I guess, first.
A volunteer, then?
No, this was actually a job, when grant money permits.
Great job.
I was just, I know it's late, I was ready to go home, I just want to point out that we're going to do an inventory of the park also, about a week. Brad generously agreed to do this, she was incredibly busy, and I was so thankful that she did this for us. And now Integral is going to do an inventory of the park. And they, in their inventory, are going to include maybe even doing some pruning at the parks, some things that really need to be pruned, that they feel might be, you know, hazardous, or... So they're going to be doing an inventory of the park. And then we will be done. We will have used up our, we would have completed our grant, which included 32 trees, although I got a few more, and the inventory. So thank you so much, Brenda.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you both.
What is a street tree? I mean, does it have to be so far from the shoulder? I'm just curious, like, what your inventory is, middle of the front, large?
We can't define it. We rely on the community to tell us. So we use, I think, a ballpark of about 10 feet off of the road, which is what most communities do. And this was the first town that we ever did. Always before every community we've inventoried has been a village with a, you know, more grid-like pattern, and definitely a street tree. The first time as a town, so it was interesting, a little hard challenge.
So thanks.
Oh, it's very good, yeah.
Thanks for the van.
Is that available in the clerk's office, your summary, or how does that work?
Oh, well, what a lot of municipalities do is post it on the website, the report in some of the...
This report.
Uh-huh.
Will that be done?
Yes.
Can we do that?
Yes, sure.
Is it a blank on the tree, or would it be on, where would it be on the website? Would it be, would you go to tree?
It could be a blank, it could be noted on the front page.
And some municipalities submit the coordinates to the counting, and then you can have a little...
You know where your arm is, you're...
Oh.
Guess if you're going to keep the...
So you can send out...
Where are you? Yeah, but that's, you'd appreciate the work, and I hope, macro.
If I can get a copy of it, just for the org. I could, I'll take that.
You know, it's easy to say, I love trees, I love trees, and all, but actually go out and do all this work and do that, you know?
Well, the nature takes care of that.
Okay, the correspondence, let me see if there's any of that in here. This, now we just, spark stuff. I don't have any other correspondence. Does any other board member have anything in the way of correspondence?
No.
No correspondence, but we have events.
Announcements.
I don't know if anybody's watching at this late hour.
Well, it'll be on Panda.
Okay, we have the Tour to Red Hook. It's the Fourth Annual Bicycle Festival, sponsored by the Greenways Trails and Greenway Committee, Sunday, May 19th, 1 until 3. Registration starts at 12:30 at the Rec Park North Parking Lot, and the tour will begin promptly at 1, and will follow a portion of the Village to Village Trail. It's family and eco-friendly.
Isn't that Sunday?
Oh, it is. It won't be on Panda in time. Well, this will be on in time.
Well, spread the word, everybody.
Yeah, everybody bring your...
Tell people we deal with the miss.
All of us, all, 10 of us. June 11th, Tuesday, is the seniors' food drive. It says, please help the children of our community. Donations should be dropped off at the firehouse from 1 until 3, and 6 until 8. That's Tuesday, June 11th.
The only comment I might have is if the Arbor Day thing, and Nancy, you want to say that was a very nice affair you guys all had there, and the number of trees you planted at the Rec Park and everything?
Yeah, with several, you know, several people.
Yes.
Yes, you know, we have a school part that we do, we have the festivities that day, and then we have the planting part of it. So, yeah, I think next year, we're talking about doing it at the park, because I feel like Arbor Day and Earth Day should be amongst trees. And I think, and this, I'm just, this, I'm just throwing it out there, I'm not sure what will definitely happen until I, you know, speak to the committee and some other people, but... Then you can really come with your family, and with children, you know, here, you're in a parking lot, and what do you do, really? So the children, or people can take a walk, they can, you know, have a picnic, there's a lot that you could be doing there that day, like an Arbor Day or... I just think it would be a better environment for it. But thank you, yes.
It was a very nice thing you all put together, that was, yeah.
Thank you very much, and thank you for coming. I appreciate it.
Well, I need public comment. Any more comment from the board members?
No.
Well, I move we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's it.